Okay, good evening, everybody. This is the Rockport Select Board meeting, Monday, July 10th, here at the Rockport Opera House Meeting Room. Our agenda begins with approval of minutes from previous meetings. And we have before us the minutes from the Monday, June 26th meeting, and I await a motion on those.
So moved.
Any discussion on those minutes? I found no errors. Nothing like that?
Looks good.
Not all in favor of approving the minutes? Any opposed? Three-nothing vote. Our next regular Select Board meeting will be on Monday, August 14th, at 7:00 PM here. On Monday, July 24th, we have a Select Board Library Committee Workshop, which will start here at 6:00 PM. And there are other workshops and meetings that are noted on the agenda. Does anybody have any agenda changes?
Are we any closer to getting the capital improvement date, or a month for them to meet?
It's on the agenda.
Yeah.
We'll talk about it. No other agenda changes? If not, then public comment. This is a time for the public to make comments, direct at issues not under discussion on this evening's agenda. Comment from the public will be welcome prior to each agenda item. Further comment will be granted by permission of the Board. All public comments should be brief and to the point. Does anybody wish to make public comment this evening? Please come up and tell us who you are.
Hello. My name's Teri Smith. I'm the House Manager here at Rockport Opera House. And I wanted to come up during public comment to invite you all, and our audience, to join us here at the Opera House on Saturday, August 12th. We'll be having a celebration of this very building, which is, we are currently in our 125th year of service. So we're very excited. We're having a party, the town is having a party in honor of the building before you all, so please come and join us. We'll have tons of fun activities. There'll be a virtual reality demonstration by Rockport Public Library. We'll have the band Creatures of Habit will be performing that evening. We'll also have Earl Shuttleworth, our mainstay historian, will be coming in and giving a lecture about turn of the century, turn of the 19th century of Rockport, and how that related to Opera House use during that time. So lots of fun activities besides that come out for the day. We're going to have even a live street performance. That's really fun. Don't want to forget that one. But if you're interested in volunteering for the day, we could use some help either day of, or even passing out flyers. Give me a call, or come see me, or email me. My details about this event and how to get in touch with us are on our website, which is at rockportoperhouse.com. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to make public comment?
Oops. The new guy.
Then we will go to our Town Manager's Report. Mr. Town Manager, the floor is yours.
Yes. First thing, it's reason all the police officers in the audience today, don't worry, we're not under arrest or anything.
Not yet.
Yeah, there's still time. There's still time. I'm pleased to announce the appointment of Anthony "Tony" Del Vecchio to the Rockport Police Department as a full-time employee. Anthony has been working for us on a part-time basis since June 5th, and has exceeded Police Chief Gagny's expectation. Tony is a graduate of the Southern Maine Community College with an Associate Degree in Criminal Justice and the Maine Criminal Justice Academy. He came to us already pinned. He was recently been, he's been recently employed with the Scarborough Police Department, and currently lives in Warren. So we've invited him here to do the official ceremony of his wife is here, I'm sorry, your name isn't on here, Lindsey, to actually formally pin the badge, his new badge, on him and make him a formal, full-time police patrol officer for the town of Rockport. So congratulations, Tony.
Randy, before we start, it says that he's exceeded your expectations, but how high did you set your expectations?
You can ask him. I can tell you, in 29 years, I've never been to a car bear accident. He's on the boat.
All right. That's good.
He sees things that some other people don't even see.
Lindsey, you can do the honors. Thank you.
Hold on, wait, I should get a picture.
Yeah, get a photo. Where's Linda when you need her?
We can wait back.
Slow down, Lindsey.
Those things never go easy.
Go for the best.
Put it straight in.
Congratulations. Thank you for letting him join us.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Tony's parents came up from Connecticut?
I have stories on him, yeah, from many years ago, when he was left-handed.
All the way up from Connecticut?
No, he stayed out there in the Vega Lakes.
Oh, we're from Connecticut. Thank you.
We're in Connecticut.
Middlebury?
Yep.
I was from outside New Haven, so not too far.
You don't need that for anything else, right?
No, nope.
Back to work.
He can go back to work.
Thank you guys for coming.
Thank you. I won't tell many stories.
Also, in police, related to police, the police officers recently completed their qualifications, their annual qualification for their weapons, and that was done a couple weeks ago. And I have to say that I, I have to make a comment that the guys, both, in both departments, are working really well together, and the seriousness at which they approach this task is really impressive, that they, they, there's not, it's not fun and games. They take it very, very seriously, and they work really hard on this qualification. It's my second year of going down with them, and they really, they really take it seriously. And I think it's a credit to our department and departments that we have such really good officers that work so hard getting qualified, and then going above and beyond to even be better qualified, with the hope that they will never have to pull their sidearm out of their holster and actually have to use it. So it's, it's, it's an important thing that they, they be properly trained, and they do, they've done a really good job at that. Next, not on your, I have a couple additional things not in your Town Manager's Report, but I don't know if everybody's noticed, but there's been some work being done on the, on the Barbara Jackson Building down the street, where there's, Barbara's moved out of there, and there's a new coffee shop going in. So I'm pleased to announce that the coffee shop, it will be open hopefully by the end of, middle of next month.
Mid to end August.
Oh, mid to ne, oh, it keeps going out.
We're waiting for the 12th.
And, you know, one of the nice, one of the nice things about being in a small town is you can, we may not be big, but we're small, but we, you know, we can recognize these small changes in a community like ours. I'd like to introduce Jacob Winjes, Winjes? Oh, I got it right, yes. From Seafolk Coffee and Seafolk Coffee Company, who will be opening in the Jackson Building at the, mid to late August, you just said, right? I'm holding you to that.
Yes.
And it, it will be a very, really nice, it will be a really nice space. It's, they've opened up the building, they've done a lot of work, they've opened it up front to back, and Stu has talked about the fact that at some point in time in the future of putting a little deck on the back, so that people can sit and have coffee and look out over at the harbor. So it should be, it should be a great addition to the, to the village. Thank you, Jacob, and for coming, and I think he's, he's going to be a good asset to the village.
Look forward to it. Do you have anything you'd like to say?
We're just, we're grateful and...
If you could come up to the podium, so the folks at home can hear.
We're just grateful and thrilled to be able to perch ourselves in a village as extraordinary as this, and a spot as extraordinary as this spot is, and we're really looking forward to, you know, sort of having a hearth for the community in the core of the village to come and gather and drink very good coffee, and eat very good food, and converse, and connect, and drink in the waterscape and village scape. And we just feel blessed to be, you know, we just feel that it's moving through us, and we feel blessed to be able to be present with all of you in this amazing place in which we live, and create a little, a little bubble of goodness right in the, right in the village. So, thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. The high sidewalk, delays in the high sidewalk, I don't know if we've talked about this before, but basically the delays are caused by the project being delayed from last fall to this year. It meant that the Farleys, the company that did all, most of the work, has been able to get the work done on the sidewalk itself, but the, the handrail that's going up on the top is all custom fabricated, and they're trying to fit that custom fabrication into work that they've, they had planned for this spring and early summer. So it's looking like the, the opening date is for the end of July, and I've had some conversations with Lenny Gronros about doing a ribbon cutting and making it formal, you know, a formal opening of the new sidewalk, which it should be really beautiful. The handrails that are going up are custom-built, and they will curve along with the, with the sidewalk. Instead of being 10-foot sections that are flat, it's going to be totally curved, and will follow the exact curve of the sidewalk itself, which is, will make it look really nice. The Summer Street, another update also, I didn't have the information when I wrote this, but Summer Street, the railing should be going, the railing that was broken when the truck lost its power and backed into it last winter, that will be replaced this week, and the cross drains, cross drainage and that work will begin on the 19th of July. The Route 1 and Route 90 traffic lights, I put in my report that they're working fine now, but today I saw a couple of times where they were, the traffic was backed up over the hill down towards the helm. It was backed up down towards the helm, so I don't know if there's still something going on, but those new traffic lights now work on a camera system rather than the things in the, in the, in the road, the wires in the road, which I think you're aware of, Chief. So there's some adjustments that they have to make. And so now they're, they're working on making that last, the last piece of sidewalk that DOT is going to do, and then paint the crosswalk on the road. But everything else is ready to go. Mount Pleasant Street, the Public Works crew has been finishing up the remainder of the ditching work. I think the last piece was in front of Molly Shoals', Shoals' house. There's a long stretch there where the drainage needed to be worked on, and so they're working on that. And Gartley and Dorsky is finishing up the engineering, so we can send that out to bid. We hope to have that done in the next couple of weeks. Walker Park has dried up enough so that we've removed the flagging around that, that really bad wet spot, and we're able to get that mowed. This year, the leak, that, the leak in the, from the water main did contribute, we'll likely still have the problem in the spring, but it shouldn't last as long as it did this year, because we did have a water leak that was contributing to that. Randy's gone again. We've been, again, still trying to work on the streetlights. They're going to go back out again, because some of the streetlights, as I was saying to Doug, that they had as working, I went out the other night, after the last meeting, I went out and drove down Pascal, where the streetlights were moved to the other side of the road, and they are still not functioning. And one of the other things is that the, we've been working for the past, oh, since budget time, Jan, I think, Mark, you'll remember this, Jan Rosenbaum was talking about the LED project that Rockland has done. We've been meeting with the, with the city of Rockland for, since then, and I think we're at the point now where we can make a report to the town at the first meeting in August, because there may be, there is some potential for us to do this, a similar thing, and have a payback that's in a reasonable amount of time to change all the streetlights over to LEDs. The town would own them, and they would all go to LED lights. So, you know, I think that work is done, so Jan would like to come in.
I got his email, so I'm planning to put that on the agenda for August, and I would like to, at the same time, just on a streetlight agenda entirely, if you could report back to what the attorneys say about the suggestion about, you know, reporting to them, and then withholding some money if the streetlights aren't fixed, if we could sort of roll that all in to have a streetlight fest at our next meeting, that would be good.
Could I ask you a quick question of you on this, too? When will we see the numbers, projected costs, projected savings, maintenance, and everything?
On that, at that next meeting.
And another question is, wouldn't, hmm, wouldn't it be more appropriate for them to take this information to the Capital Improvement Committee? Because this is really probably going to be a capital improvement, and shouldn't it be prioritized with the other?
I think it should come to you guys first, and then to say, is this...
You can then refer to that committee if you choose to.
Right.
This has been in the works for a long time, so I think that'd be good for the Board to hear.
Yeah, I'd love to hear.
To just look at it and say, okay, let's put this into the capital improvement plan?
We could also decide at that point, if we wanted to, as a Board, to say, just, you know, we, we can just put it in the budget if we want to, or suggest it to go in the budget. I mean, that's a discussion we can have.
Yeah. But what, I think what Jan is recommending, what he's, and I agree with him, there's still a lot of unanswered questions that we need to go through, is to set up a committee that will look at, an energy committee like, similar to what they have in Rockland, to actually do some more analysis and some more work, to make sure we're going in the right direction, because there's a lot, and Jan knows this stuff better than I do, a lot better than I do, is the whole issue of color, light color, and, you know, whatever those numbers are, define what the color of the light is, and...
The wavelength.
Yeah. So it's not done by just, you know, us here. So setting, but that was part of his, his thing, was setting up an energy committee that would work on that.
Is there somewhere in Rockland we can go right now to look at what they're thinking about?
What they've done? Yes.
On Main Street there?
On Main Street, yep. Yep. They're, they're in the process. They've done their Main Street, and that was about a two-and-a-half-year payback time was for them to, to purchase all those lights and put them in.
And if I recall correctly, though, those are Globe-style.
Yes, exactly. Right. And they had to buy the whole unit, the, they had to buy the, the base, the pole, everything.
But it's a different...
My guess is by the time we get around to do it, the technology will have changed, and there'll be different things available, too, so that'll be part of our discussion.
What Rockland is looking at now is changing all the rest of the streetlights in the city, which are the Cobra Heads and all of those, and that's the analysis they're working on now, and that we would start to work on. The good news is the piece of the work that we're doing now is with the intern that we have, that's going around gathering data on roads and all that, one of the things, pieces of data he's gathering is data on...
GIS.
GIS data on where the streetlights are, and the pole data. So that will be helpful in establishing exactly where all the streetlights are, because I know Mark has dealt with this, is the, the location between where CMP has it located and the address they have, and we have, those things don't, don't match up perfectly. So we'll have GIS data with an actual location of where the streetlight is. I mean, I've never done that, driven around, but the, the guys on nights usually do that every once in a while, they'll drive around and look.
They, they used to do it when I was there, at the end of every month.
Yeah.
And provide it to Craig, and he would fax it into CMP.
Right.
And then usually on the next following weekend, I think, is when they go to fix them. But your point about lights still being out is...
There's, there's some that have been out for years.
I've been, I've done that in a prior life, and what you, when you go up in your bucket, and you put your hand over the eye, the light will come on. It's the fact that when the, the eye overheats, it shuts itself off...
Okay.
Until it cools off, and then it comes back on. So yes, they probably are working when they just do that quick check, but anyway.
But the one by your house has been out for two, two years?
Yeah, it's been out for a long time. Every once in a while, it comes on for a short period, and that may be what you're talking about. Maybe the, the unit is defective, so when it comes on, it heats up too much, and then shuts itself off. I don't know. You have a BB gun?
But it's, that, that one has been out for, for several years, and there's a gentleman up, I can't remember his name, he's got a...
That doesn't matter.
Scandinavian-sounding name.
Oh, yeah, I know what you mean.
But he, he, he was talking about that's been out for several years. The library cleanup has been completed, and they were only closed for about fi, they were only closed for five days, and there was very, there was, I think there were three books that were damaged, and one beanbag chair that was damaged. Other than that, we escaped relatively unscathed. The walls, they went around with a moisture tester gun thing, and they could read the, the moisture content in the, in the floor and in the walls. And after, after five days, the moisture content in the walls dropped down to a, to the acceptable level because of all of the, the industrial-sized dehumidifiers they had in there, and the fans that were blowing and everything. So that has worked out okay. The question now is, is who's responsible for the cleanup? We, we got it in there, and it may, it may simply come down to a case of that the, the cost of us trying to force the, the owner to pay for the cleanup may cost us more in legal fees than in going, trying to go to court. At this point, we don't know. We sent it off to him, we haven't heard back whether he's going to pay for it or not.
The one thing I think we want to make sure of, and we've talked about this, is that, you know, when we vacate those premises, that they don't come back and say...
Right.
You know, it wasn't done properly, or whatever, and so you owe us a bunch of money. So we need to make, make sure that it's documented, that it's...
That was what our lawyer said, is to make sure that, that you, that you send it out to him, ask him to pay, and if he says no, he's not going to pay, then we're off the hook for that future stuff. Diane has been, in our office, has been working diligently on employee training, and tomorrow there's a talk here that's called TIC Talk, which she has some local experts coming in to talk about, about TICs and TIC, you know, what they can, the harmful things that they can cause, and what we can do to prevent being bitten by a TIC. That is for, for our employees and Camden employees that work outside. I think, believe we have police coming, and Public Works coming, and Abby and her crew are coming. A lot of people from the town office are coming, and the Camden employees have all been invited. But one, one of the reasons we're doing it here is that it's going to be recorded in livestream, so any members of the public that want to watch, or go back and watch it after the fact, they can. So, and that link, I'm not going to read it, but it's, nobody will remember it, but it's on the livestream link on the town's webpage. Sue Dates, Public Works Secretary, has announced her retirement six or seven weeks from now, depending on when a replacement can be found. She's been with the town since July 1 of 2005. She just notified us last Thursday, I believe it was. We, we knew it was coming. She's been talking about it for a while, so it, it's just, she finally decided on a date. So just a heads up, so we have some things, potential items that will be coming up on the November ballot. You'll be talking about the marijuana change to the ordinance, land use ordinance to restrict marijuana sale and cultivation here in town. And also, there's another one, some minor changes to town charter that are considered by the town attorney as not being substantive, and they're just, I can't remember what the changes are, but they're minor wording changes, just to keep up with the way we do business now. The Spear, Spear Street sewer extension, I can't say that three times fast, the Spear Street sewer extension that we were talking about several months ago, that, the cost of that got so, so high that the resident that was going to pay for it decided that that wasn't going to work, so basically he negotiated a, an agreement with the McGonagall Golf Course to put a leach field on their property, so that, I believe that is all hitched up now.
Actually, my understanding, just to be actually correct, is you ended up having to reach an agreement with the Land Trust, because that's actually their link.
That's right, yep. Well, no, it's not. It's the, it's the golf course, but they hold the easement on it.
Well, they must hold a conservation easement on it, yeah.
Yep. So the, the difficulty was the Land Trust, because it had, it had, they had that, that easement on it. Public Works Department has been working on doing a lot of mowing, and tree work, and ditch work, and culvert replacements all over town. They've been also with this McDoug happy straightening signs and gotten, that have gotten out of alignment over the winter. Crosswatts and lines have all been painted. They've been very shorthanded. Typically, we have, at this time of the year, we're shorthanded because of all of the comp time that they build up over the winter time. And also, we have one employee who has his stepdaughter that is, was in a serious motorcycle accident, so he's been out taking care, care of his stepdaughter. So, and he's a, he's a pretty critical employee in that department. And I think that's, that's it.
Anybody have any further questions for the Town Manager? Okay, if not, we'll move on to unfinished business. We have a committee application for Clark Doran for the Planning Board. Is Mr. Doran here tonight?
There he is.
Great. Would you mind coming up to the podium to be questioned by the Select Board? Thanks for volunteering. If you'd like to just give us a brief synopsis of why you want to serve on the Planning Board, that'd be great.
Sure. I have a whole career worth of planning, mostly from the private sector side, but I did spend five years on a Planning Board in New Jersey before moving here three years ago, and I have a master's degree in regional planning, and I'm retired now and have some time to do some of the things that I've always wanted to do, and doing something to help the community is, is high on my list. So I would look forward to serving, and I'd be honored by the appointment.
Great, thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Doran?
Not a question, just a comment. I had a chance to meet Clark at the last Planning Board meeting that I went to, and we chatted for a while, and I think his resume is very impressive, and I think going forward, he probably has a lot to offer the town, particularly as we're getting into some of the planning issues going forward, so I certainly welcome your input.
Thank you.
Yeah, your application is very nice, very, very impressive, and it seems that you'll be a great addition. The Chair of the Planning Board is here, and we had his support and endorsement. So, given that, does anybody wish to?
So move that he join the Planning Board. I know Linda has this all typed out.
Yeah, we have to, we'll find it here, because we need to put the expiration date on it. There it is, right there.
Motion, motion to approve the appointment of Clark Doran to the Planning Board with the term expiration of June 30th, 2020.
So moved, second.
Okay, motion is made and seconded. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? None. Okay, so three-nothing vote. Thank you very much for volunteering. Welcome to the Planning Board. And at this point, by the way, I should mention that we do only have three members of the Select Board here tonight. It is a quorum, but by charter, any action we take has to have three positive votes, so a two-one vote does not pass.
Didn't I say something like that earlier, didn't I say?
Okay, moving on, under new business, we have the pleasure of accepting a gift payment in lieu of taxes received from Main Coast Heritage Trust in the amount of $5,600. This is one of the many nonprofits we have in town, and many of them over recent years have chosen to, even though they are not required... uh, even though they are not required to, uh, pay property taxes, have chosen to make a payment in lieu of taxes as, as a recognition that they do receive services from the town, uh, police protection, things like that. And so we're very grateful, uh, to have that.
Question?
Yes.
Seems that we got a little time to talk about it. Back during my time as a department head, this came up and with Rick and Carrie and we were talking about the success that Portland, Maine had, was sending out a letter to the nonprofits asking them for, in lieu of taxes, money. And I think at the time, they had gotten six or seven hundred thousand dollars back. Granted, it's a larger place. But when you have, uh, the last I knew, we had a hundred and fourteen million dollars worth of non-taxable property. And is it worth sending out a letter? I mean, what I remember hearing before is the previous board had no interest. I don't.
We have sent it out, but it may, it might be time to send it out again.
I don't, it can't hurt.
Well, you know.
I mean, there aren't that many. I, I, I feel fairly certain, and Doug, you can chip in, that the hospital, which is the largest nonprofit in town, will never contribute anything. They're, they are lobbied hard by their state organization to, to not crack that door at all. So I don't think we'll ever see anything from them. On the other hand, they do provide other benefits to the community and, and have been generous in some other donations here and there as well. But we have, uh, typically, we receive something from, uh, the media workshops, uh, Center for Furni- Center for Furniture Crapmanship did something recently.
Right.
But I think it's not a bad idea to, uh, to send it. It's, it's not that many letters, I don't believe.
No, we did it once, we did it once before, but it, it doesn't hurt to send them out again.
And to include in there that, that we've had some pleasant success and from some other organizations in towns.
Exactly.
Know that's, uh, that's good. And a lot of them, a lot of organizations, what they will use as a formula for determining how much to pay is that they are willing to pay for everything except the school portion.
So my, my side question to that would be, when it says in lieu of taxes, uh, what parameters do we have in where we can put it to use it?
Uh, it goes into the general fund.
Yeah, it doesn't.
It's hard to budget for, so we can't necessarily, you know, you can't plan for that money because they're not required to pay it. So we can't necessarily plan for it in revenues, although I would, I would say that if, if we had a long track record of receiving that, we could.
Yeah, it goes in and I, it's, it goes in one of those, I can't remember the name of the, the line. But it's always one of the, it's that line where everybody says, what's that amount of money?
I think it's like special assessments or something like that.
Yeah, I think so, yep. That, there you go. That's what it is. And it shows up there.
Can we just ask the town manager to draw up that letter?
I've got, I already have it. I, we did it, we did it before and I think it's worth doing it again.
Oh, okay, yeah, the, the letter to the, okay.
Yep.
Okay, I do need a, a motion on this one, too.
Oh, well, for this issue here, motion to accept the payment in lieu of taxes received from Maine Coast Heritage Trust in the amount of five thousand, six hundred dollars and to send them a letter of thank you.
Second.
Okay, have a motion and second. Any further discussion? Not all in favor? Any opposed? None. That's a three to nothing vote. Okay, uh, moving on, we have some additional, uh, committee applications. We have Jeff Charland, Capital Improvement Committee. It's Mrs. Charland here. Would you mind coming up? We have an application here to join the, uh, Capital Improvement Committee, which is a committee right now that needs some more horsepower. So we're very happy to have that. And it's a committee that over the next year, this board anticipates is gonna have, uh, some fairly significant tasks in front of them. So if you would like to, a brief statement of how you got.
Sure, before, before I start, when I, when I applied, I didn't know there was gonna be significant work involved, so. Thanks, Rick. I thought this was gonna be easy.
His arm just got out of the sling.
My name is Jeff Charland. I live on, uh, Forest Glen Drive and, uh, um, I didn't provide an extensive resume, but I do have, uh, experience in actually preparing capital improvement plans for both for-profit and nonprofit organizations. So I'm familiar with the, the work that's done in identifying projects, prioritizing projects and, um, uh, making them part of a, uh, our larger budget for, for organizations. So I'd love to be able to deliver the experience I have and, and help my community.
Terrific. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Charland? Your application looks good. Great to have some, uh, some new blood in town politics. It's always a good thing. Um, as I say, this committee is, does have some work ahead of it, but, uh, very important work and, uh, I think your experience will be terrific. Okay, uh, do we have a motion on this? Wait a minute here, let me find it. There it is. Did we have them together or is? Okay, there it is, right there.
I need to fiddle with it. Um, motion to approve Jeff Charland of, to the Capital Improvement Committee with the term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty eighteen.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? And that expiration date is only because we stagger our terms and we will be hopefully reappointing you after June thirtieth of next year.
It's a year, it's even easier to.
All in favor of the motion?
Not that easy.
All in favor? Okay, any opposed? Okay, thank you very much for volunteering. We now have Terry McKenzie here, who is making a lateral move from the planning board to the zoning board of appeals, so come on up.
Hopefully. I'm Terry McKenzie. I'm a certified real estate appraiser. I live out at Simonton Corner in Rockport. And I'm just, uh, recently finished, I guess, three terms on the planning board. And I would very much like to, uh, go forward and serve on the zoning board of appeals. Uh, hopefully bringing my experience in, uh, both the planning board and professionally to kind of, on a more narrow focus on the, on zoning board of appeals, if you will so allow. Uh, another thing I wanted to add was, um, I've, I'm really int- actually intensely interested in zoning because in the regular course of my business over the last fifteen years, I practice in Knox, Waldo and Lincoln Counties. And I am constantly involved with, um, zoning, almost zoning in action, uh, witnessing the impacts of zoning, zoning decisions, land use. Um, so it's kind of, um, something I've, I've developed a pretty intense interest in over the years. So hoping you guys will allow me to, to serve.
Thank you. And, uh, I've worked with Terry for the last many years on the ordinance review committee. She's been the planning board representative to that committee. Um, and, uh, she has a, a long history with the Rockport Land Use Ordinance. So do we have a motion there?
Yeah, I'll just add too, I was impressed by your participation and knowledge at the last planning board. So that was a very short introduction for me, but again, you made an impression. Motion to approve Terry McKenzie to the zoning board of appeals with the term expiration of June thirtieth, twenty nineteen.
Second. Any further discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor? Thank you. Opposed?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for being willing to continue working with that land use ordinance. Okay, um, next item is, uh, discussion of vote regarding developing ordinance changes to prohibit retail marijuana establishments and social marijuana clubs in Rockport, uh, hopefully in time to be placed on the November ballot. We had the vote in June asking this question. It was a fairly clear vote, I think. The percentage was.
Twenty-eight percent yes, no, sixty-two percent and blank, eight point three percent.
So in Rockport, that's a, that's a landslide. Um, and the reason we put the question on the ballot in the first place was so that we didn't, if, if the people weren't in favor of it, then it wasn't gonna be a very useful time for the ordinance review committee to spend lots of time bang, banging their heads against the wall, developing ordinances as to where it could happen and what the requirements would be and things like that. Uh, and the people said they weren't interested in it, so this makes that land use ordinance amendment fairly easy to do. I know, uh, I'm talking with Owen about it. Owen, Owen was in favor of having them in town, I know, and I'm not gonna put words in his mouth. But he did bring up the point that, um, the question that we asked on the, uh, the non-binding question last time talked about retail and retail social clubs, it did not talk about cultivation, commercial cultivation. So that may be something that we have to visit down the road at some point. But, uh, I think at this point, it would be, um, a fairly simple land use ordinance change to, uh, to put the wording in there to prohibit the retail and the social clubs.
Uh, my, Jamie, my recommendation is that you would, you would do a prohibition on everything and allow it and after the fact, if you decided to do cultivation, to do that after the fact. Because you don't wanna leave that door open. You know, I, I would, my recommendation would be to, to just prohibit it entirely in town. Um, I didn't get a response back from town council, he's on vacation, but, um, my, my advice would be to, that we move forward and just prohibit it. And it's easy, it would be easier to go back and just allow cultivation if that's what you decided after the fact.
Now, people have the right, right under the law to cultivate their own.
To cultivate their, it's just commercially.
Not a commercial cultivation operation, so. I mean, I would be fine with that, too. I don't know how the rest of the board feels about that.
No, again, you know, I think the people spoke pretty clearly on this and I think it's sort of starts to get to be cutting hairs if, you know, you leave the cultivation out. And so I, I agree with Rick and, um, I think we ought to direct them to just sort of ban everything and then if someone wants to come back to us, uh, at some point, uh, request, uh, a variance, then we'll address it at that time.
I would agree. Okay. Okay, I need a, a motion. I guess that'll work because it doesn't talk about, it says, "commercial activities," so that.
You want me to do this one, Doug? I actually found it this way.
Okay, sure.
That's another reason I didn't set any closer, but.
Yeah, I don't either.
Motion to direct the town manager to proceed with having the planning and community development director develop language to bring the voters on the November ballot that would amend the land use ordinance and restrict commercial marijuana activities in Rockport.
Yeah, we have the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion second. Any further discussion on this item? If not, all in favor? Any opposed? That's a three to nothing vote. Next item is to discuss the schedule for the Capital Improvement Committee workshop, perhaps more than one workshop. I put this on just so we can perhaps get the process going. I know we'll probably talk about it in our goals workshop coming up in a couple of weeks.
I did, I did speak with, uh, Alan Mitchell about talking to Richard Lane to see if he might be interested. And also, I think most of their work, according to Alan, has already been completed. It's just they haven't sat down formally in front of everybody.
Yeah, they have to do, they have to have the meeting in public. It has to be a public meeting. It is a town committee after all.
And, and they do have, they, they're not a full quorum of, you know, a full body yet. There's only three members. You know, they met, they, they haven't had a meeting.
No, no.
One of the challenges, I think, is, is Megan is still trying to get a date to, I think it's a little premature to set a date for the workshop i- i- in the near future. If you wanted to set a date for the workshop for November, that, that may be doable, but to, for them to pull together a meeting and have discussions, real meaningful discussions, uh, in the next month is gonna be very difficult.
Personally, I'd prefer to have it done in October so that we'd have an idea of what the, what we could implement into the budget for next year rather than waiting until November.
I think, uh, one of the thoughts that I had was perhaps doing a two-stage process where we, you know, let them get their feet under them and have a little meeting and a preliminary discussion about the plan that they have in front of them. And then perhaps we can get together in a workshop format and then get the select board's input on what our priorities might be. That might be sometime, and I, I don't wanna set a date tonight, but sometime in the October timeframe, I think. And then, and then move ahead and, and then let them get their teeth into it and then meet with them again just before budget season and see where they are with that. That was, that was sort of my thought of a possible process. That's, I don't know where the rest of the board, where you wanna go. I just wanted to put this on so we could sort of get the process rolling.
So, again, I'm sorry if I'm a little behind the curve on this. The, the thing holding it up is that we don't have enough members on that.
We had two members resign. Uh, it was, uh, Will Gartley and.
Bill Lane.
Bill Lane.
Yeah.
Uh, because they felt, because they would end up perhaps getting a lot of work from it. In their business, they felt it might be a conflict. They both said that they would be willing to, more than willing to participate as advisors to the committee. So that's one of the reasons that the committee was down a little bit. And of course, we've added, added one tonight, so that's, uh, that's helpful.
So do we now have a quorum or do we still need more people?
Uh, we have.
Use one more person.
The roster, but let me look.
So you had three, right?
Okay.
And I think the, the previous board charged them with a list of things to look at, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, well, they have the, uh, the capital improvement plan that was developed by, by Rick and Megan and the town staff, which is extensive. So they have that report to get their teeth into.
Into July.
And, and even since then, there have been a few additions, as I recall.
Well, we haven't formally added them, but we've discovered some things that we were missing.
But there's still, I'm looking at the roster of the committee here, there's still one vacancy on the committee with the addition of.
Yeah.
Of, uh, our member tonight. Um, so they have, they have four. That's enough for them to, to get going on it, I think.
They just have to formally meet. They haven't formally met.
Correct.
You know.
And I think it'd be great to have, you know, input from the new member, too. That would be a good thing to do. So, but I, if, uh, Rick, perhaps you could pass along to Megan that maybe we might be looking at.
An October date?
An October date, sometime for a workshop for them, and let them decide, you know, how much they wanna meet between now and then. But that, I would consider that as a preliminary pass from them on, you know, they may look through things and say, well, this, this thing you definitely have to do. And, and here's some other things that are sort of middle of the road and here's some things that we think can be deferred. And then that can help us make our decisions and, and, and we can perhaps, at that workshop, give them a little more guidance and then they can come back perhaps with a more solid plan before we get into the budget.
So can we sort of suggest a timeframe we'd like to see them operate within? I mean, can we say we'd like to have you guys come back to us in September or October?
Well, I think we, I think we can say October. That's, that was my suggestion.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Was, uh, you know, have that first workshop. And not necessarily for them to have absolutely everything done, but just to have a conversation at that point between the board and the committee, I think, would be helpful. To see where they are.
And to set up, I think, future meetings with them as well in the spring.
Right.
So that we can tell them what has been picked off their list and perhaps give them others. Uh, so at least two or three times a year, they ought to.
I think two times is probably good for this year.
Yeah.
And we'll see. And, and we'll be in, the chair will let us know if he needs to talk to us more frequently, I'm sure.
Once we get this up and it, it gets up and running, I think it's important that the Capital Improvement Committee be set, that the work that they do is separate from the budget.
Right.
Because you don't want, you, we've talked about this before, but we don't wanna have the capital improvement plan become our ability to fund.
Right.
You know, because too often, they become one and the same and they're two different things. Because we can't fund it, doesn't mean, right now, doesn't mean it doesn't, it goes off the plan. It doesn't mean that that need goes away. It, it, and that, that's what happens when you, when you're working on the plan parallel to the budget. There's a tendency to say, well, we can't afford it, we're not gonna put it on the plan.
Right.
And, you know, the plan is the plan.
The, the plan is a plan and the committee should work separately from the budget committee and from the budget process. So, well, I'll work on an October date and, uh, hopefully we can get the committee, we'll have a chance to meet a handful of times between now and then. And, um, and you guys will have a chance to go through the capital improvement plan as well.
Is that online?
It is.
Yeah, I think, I think we gave you a.
It's in the budget.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I've got it, yeah.
Okay. So we'll, we'll shoot for October there. Okay, our next, uh, item is to discuss the process for updating the comprehensive plan. I know from both Doug and Mark talked about this during the, the election phase and, uh, we have our goals workshop coming up. I asked Jamie to come in and, and sort of give us a, the ten thousand foot view of what we have to do to start that process because I think that'll be very helpful as we go to our goals workshop in a couple of weeks so that we can set reasonable goals around this that can be met, so. Mr. Francamano, the floor is yours.
Thanks very much. Uh, the comprehensive plan, uh, you're familiar with it. The new members have copies. It's a two thousand and four document and very well-prepared. Uh, there's practically a planner's hall of fame in the frontispiece, including Evan Rickard and others. I think Doug Cole was involved back then, too. And the, uh, um, the document is not stale by any, um, statutory measure, but there is a finding of consistency from the state planning office that is more than twelve years old. So, uh, there are a few areas where that might not serve us well. So it is timely to work on it. And the, um, So, uh, there are a few areas where that might not serve us well, so it is timely to work on it, and the, um, the statutory and the, uh, the statutory underpinnings, the very fact of a state planning office, which has been abolished since then, uh, the, a lot of that has changed, but the incentives for the community to have an up-to-date comprehensive plan really haven't, and I, I'm glad to see that there's energy for that uh, on this new board. The project is pretty long-term, the last one took three years to prepare. I think there's a lot that's just fine in the document in terms of, um, what we can use for guidance in land use decision-making and in other stuff. Uh, you're talking about the comprehensive plan right now, and it's, it's an obvious, uh, opportunity to make sure that the comprehensive plan and the capital improvement plan are well meshed, among other things, so that's, that's an interesting opportunity. And the, um, the proposal that I've put in front of you is a, is a two-year plan uh, that begins with reconstituting the comprehensive plan committee, giving them a charge of duties, and having regular meetings all through the remainder of this fiscal year. And then, starting July one, two thousand and eighteen, you see here the beginning of my budget request for, um, basically outside consultant support from the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission to affect the actual drafting, and some of the legal requirements involving what's left of the state planning office and other state agencies that would review throughout the following fiscal year. And, uh, if you have that timeline in front of you, or any other, um, topics for questions, I, I'm ready.
What are the statutory requirements for the comprehensive plan committee? Is there a size that's required, or a certain number of members or anything like that? There is a requirement to have a committee, as I, as I recall.
There is a requirement, uh, but that they be appointed by the select board is really the only one I know of in terms of qualifications. Ann Krieg is, uh, going through all this right now, helping Rock Land get started on theirs, uh, so she will have the very latest, um, state-of-the-art, um, information for us when, when she begins her work. But the constitution of the committee, all I know of is the select board's approval. So, I, I can make a note to be sure of that when we meet again.
The last committee, I think, was fairly large, wasn't it?
Yes.
And that's seven, or?
That's, uh.
More than that. But I think we're riding on, they're still riding on their shoulders, quite honestly, because it was done so well. As you say, Jamie, it's, it's, uh, it's very well-written, uh, that doesn't mean that there don't need to be some changes to it, they undoubtedly do, but I think the task this time is probably not going to be quite as daunting as it was in two thousand and four.
What's the difference between updating versus rewriting? I mean, is it, is there an ability for it to be reviewed in-house by whomever?
Yeah, I think, one of the things that Jamie and I talked about, and it's in my, my comments, is that there's basically this, it looks like there's two phases to this. The first phase is to, to really look at, for the next year, look at what the plan says, and identify, I'm sure there's areas of the plan that, that's low-hanging fruit that we haven't gotten to yet, that we can implement, and move those things forward. And then, there's, there's other things that need, they'll identify areas that need updating, and some areas won't need it, and some areas will. And, and that will be the next phase next year, would be the updating phase. I don't, like you just said, I think it was so well-written that it doesn't, the whole thing doesn't need to be thrown out and start over again.
Structurally, it's very sound.
Right. You know, but, you know, one of the things that often comes up with this kind of a process is, uh, you know, a community engagement piece, so that, you know, we have, that the, the comprehensive plan reflects a community, a vision that the community wants, and, um, and that could run on a parallel, a parallel course to this first phase is, you know, i- if there's vision that the, the people in town want and, for, for their community, it can, it can be worked into the comprehensive plan, but it's, it's got to be part of a, a larger conversation.
There, there's no substitute for actually reading the document. And the, um, the process that we'll go through as we gather human resources to the problem, and at a later phase, some financial resources also, is that all of a sudden, someone else will read the plan. And we'll really want that input as the year rolls on, and, and rushing into, uh, a, a sequence that involves drafting is not as helpful as, uh, an open-ended phase, I guess I wouldn't call it open-ended, but a sufficiently long first phase where we are gathering input. And that's my job, it's very important that, when that input comes, that people see where it went, they're satisfied that I'm capturing that through ideally, a workshop setting and reporting back to that group as the suggestions come in, and start to funnel that into areas of work, and we'll fine-tune that scope of work that I attached for Ann Krieg, the planner at the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission, to make sure, number one, that we're getting the right amount of sweat equity in terms of what I'll be working on and what she's working on the following year, but also that, um, the, the stuff that comes in for comments that really goes together in a bundle, and it turns out there are three or four people who are really interested in calming traffic on crossroads in Rockport, and you know, that, what are we going to do about it? And so, when those interest groups, for lack of a better phrase, are, are, make themselves um, known, they have the effect of doing quality control on each other's ideas that they're basically drafting, and so we're going to have a clearinghouse of that in year one, and drafting in year two. And, uh, it's important that, that people be involved who are committed to the project, but it, it'll be my role to make sure that that material that we bring in is relevant and captured in an efficient way to, to share with others.
And I know, this is a way we can really use our committees, too. Um, I know they did in Camden when I was liaison to the pathways committee, for example. Uh, and Camden just finished doing their comprehensive plan revision, they had, asked the pathways committee to go through the pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure portion of their comprehensive plan and make suggestions as to wording and things like that, so they did a lot of work, and in fact, when they did the work, because they're a two-town committee, they did a lot of that work with an eye toward both towns, so we may be able, we may have a piece of work that's already started there for that portion of it, but for example, the harbor committee, you know, we would want their input on, on things, the parks, recreation, all, all the committees, I think, can have a, a really good role for this, and it's a good way to get more engagement as well.
Uh, Jamie, I think it's great you did this timeline here, and that's wonderful, because it gives us a, you know, a sense of, you know, how we're doing as we move along, if we're staying on schedule. A couple of questions about the timeline.
Uh, pardon me, is someone able to scroll down to the timeline in the, it's roughly, um,
Page thirty?
Thirty of PDF of sixty-six pages, I don't know who, I can take the trackpad if, if no one else has.
Yeah, if you open up the, you open up the bookmarks.
Look at the contents, it's a lot easier to get to.
This way is down. That is my second of two wonderful memos. Okay. Here is Ann's estimate, and.
A little more.
The timeline.
There you go. Um, so, my question sort of has to do with the timing here over the first three bullet points there, where um, it talks about, um, you know, report of an implementation of the two thousand and four plan, then in October, beginning monthly committee meetings. And I guess, I, I just need some clarification in my mind, when do you anticipate putting together this comprehensive review committee? When would that happen?
I'd like the select board to start right away and spend the summer basically recruiting members for that.
Yeah, that's up to us to appoint them, and I was going to say, I mean, in his summer, two thousand and seventeen, he says, appoint two select board members, I would put that on the agenda for our next meeting, since there's only three of us here tonight. Uh, but in the meantime, any member who knows somebody who would like to serve.
Those that aren't here get voted in, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Well, I, I would welcome the opportunity to be on that, but then, but here's the question, though, you see in September of twenty-seven, it says, "Report on implementation of the two thousand and four comprehensive plan." Is that the committee's report?
No, that's something that I would offer to start them off.
Okay, so you'll go through.
You find a hundred twenty-eight tasks, you know, as you do your close reading of the two thousand and four comp plan.
Yeah, yeah, I, yep.
And you wonder what got done.
Yeah, okay.
And we have had periodic reports on the implementation of it, since I've been on the board, not necessarily every year, but at least every other year, so and that's something that Jamie has done, and, and the planners before him have done that as well, so that would be his report.
So, that would say Jamie's report on implementation.
Right, okay.
And then in October, then the committee would actually start to meet, okay.
Right, and that was a very egocentric memo.
Right.
It's my report to the committee, but when you're talking about forming committee, of course, your thought is getting that committee to report to the select.
Yeah, it just wasn't clear to me.
That won't be in October or, or September this year, that'll be much later.
Yeah.
And so, to go a little further into this, um.
Oh, let me just add, too, as we go forward, I had an opportunity to speak with Anastasia Fisher, and she expressed an interest in being part of this, and you'll remember during the candidate night, this was sort of one thing that was important to her, was comprehensive planning, and so.
Yeah, she's on my list.
If we're out looking for people.
Copy with this.
I, I think it will be important that I don't do any recruiting, but that any select board member who's asked to do that by the full board would say, if you have questions, go talk to Jamie and find out what the workload is, or what the pressures are.
Well, can I officially put her name in the basket to be considered?
She'll have to fill out a committee application, but I, I agree totally, I, I met with her before the election, and, and she expressed an interest in that, that type of work, and, uh, expressed an interest in serving the town, even if she wasn't elected to the select board, so I think that she would be a.
So, a little later in the process, to help that committee along, in November, we have the next opportunity to receive from the municipal planning assistance program, which is formerly the state planning office, the, the latest resource package where they do a lot of the work to establish demographic data sets and update them. I don't know how much they do anymore, I think they might just send you a bunch of links, because there's only two people left, uh, at the office. But, in any event, this would be the official handoff of the demographic and other data that we would use as a basis point for many of the resource, uh, chapters, the inventory chapters. The comp plan is divided up into a book one and a book two, and in book one, you put all of your policy, um, and the important questions that I think the committee will want to wrestle with, and in book two, unless you find yourself with a, uh, for example, on the conservation commission, we have, um, an, uh, an expert in water quality. Unless you find yourself with that kind of expertise and volunteering, uh, to participate, book two is an inventory of resources in the town that gets kind of dry, and that will probably be worked on, you know, with this outside consultant. But you need this package, and you need, you know, everywhere in the two thousand and nineteen comp plan, or whatever it turns out to be, will say, we based this on the data that we got from the state in November of two thousand and seventeen, so that's, that's a milestone date.
So, you feel comfortable, in the next year and eleven months, you could have this back for a vote?
I do.
Or before?
I think that it would probably be a, a finished document as soon as we get back, you see at the bottom, the time that we would put in, in the, in the second summer, would be the really intense period of, uh, public hearings, and uh, you know, there's, there's a lot that can go wrong in that, in that moment. But, um, in a community that has some big decisions right behind it, like maybe a library or other stuff that we wouldn't want to mention tonight, but if some big decisions have gone by, as we expect, I think that it would be possible to have our document done at the end of two thousand and eighteen, and through that winter, I put January, get the finding back from the state planning office that it's consistent with the Growth Management Act. There's only a shred of statutory underpinnings left in Maine, so it's not, it's not tough to get that finding, but they also coordinate review from other state agencies that might want to input on it. And then we would have a document good for a run-up to a June meeting in two thousand and nineteen.
I do feel obligated to ask about the budget, the ten to twenty thousand dollars. What would happen if we went through the comprehensive plan review and scored how we've done? And it turns out, we're pretty good, you know, we hit seventy-five percent of our goals, and the ones that are remaining are fairly straightforward. Would we still be obligated to spend this money for, uh, the support?
I don't know, but I think there's an apple and oranges problem, you know, starting out, because if you're saying, we did great on implementation.
Well, I'm saying if we hit seventy-five percent.
Came up with eighty-five more things that we want to do.
Yeah, I say, we want the document to be forward-looking also.
Yeah.
So, even though if we've accomplished everything, there may be new things we need to add in there.
We definitely don't want the regional planning commission's help implementing our two thousand and four comp plan. If that's what you mean. But if we create a, a, a new plan fifteen years later, with a million and one other things that need doing, you know, that, it will really take the select board leadership to, uh, address this committee, wind it down in a timely way, and, and take over the project. You know, and that's the really sensitive stuff that, I'll just scroll back up in here, so it's not, uh, it's not a secret. At some point, you know, we're going to have the select board, I'm going to go a little higher. I'm suggesting the select board appoint two members to recruit a committee that I'm calling the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee. That third word is important, because I, I anticipate that this group will be very attached to the project of writing a comprehensive plan, and would be, um, involved in the select board's supervision of this outside consultant, you know, and the actual drafting of the plan. How we assign those things, I mean, I don't know, but I'm telling you, I recommend that the select board have a review committee that they keep closed tabs on, and is, um, basically done with its work in spring of two thousand and eighteen for a handoff to the outside consultant. If you find that you want, uh, this same committee to continue, and call it the new comprehensive plan drafting committee, you know, and you find that the creation of the two thousand and nineteen comprehensive plan becomes a big project with that kind of scope, where we need the outside support, there should be some milestones that you've passed before you got there, where you say to yourselves as select board members, wait a minute, I didn't say, I never signed up for a big project where we're going to have a, a whole new comp plan, I just wanted an update. Mark asked that question starting out, what's the difference between an update and a revision? I don't know. The state planning office doesn't care, they're going to read it and give us a finding.
So, uh, again, and I, I apologize, uh, this being really my first time involved in this. So, you're saying we have a committee that kind of comes up with some ideas?
Yep.
The select board approves it, and then we farm this out to the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission to actually draft our.
That's my suggestion, where we say, at the end of the first year, here's all the suggestions that we've had, some of them will be, I don't like this chapter. And we won't, you know, I won't rate that as handoff-ready to an outside consultant, who will just, you know, that will just balloon the hours that someone spends on, uh, working on our plan. But if some, if a few people find, uh, find each other through this phase one, and they're all interested in the same thing, and they draft a paragraph or a page, or suggest deleting five pages and replacing it with one, that would be something to hand off for a kind of unification. If I wind up working on it all, I'll be doing a bad job because of my other responsibilities. But at the same time, it might be really, um, seamless fit, depending how much work we, we, we bite off.
Does, does the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission, do they have a lock on doing this, or do they have competitors that'll write your comprehensive plan for you, once you've gone through the?
They don't have a lock, they have a good relationship with state agencies that they work with under contract all the time. The Department of Agriculture, Conservation and Forestry, the Maine Department of Transportation, so leveraging those relationships is productive. But anybody can help you with your comp plan.
To be clear, what they've given us is, is basically a, a statement of potential services they may offer, and rough ballpark costs of those things, depending on the level of involvement, we need them.
Right, I don't know if we're talking. Right. I don't know if we're talking writing, editing, or copy editing until we get there.
But we're kind of à la carte here, this is.
Yeah, and it's, it's. It may change dramatically.
I mean, it, all of it's going to depend on who serves on the Comprehensive Plan Review Committee and whether they're interested. I mean, we have a lot of talent in this town. That's how the last plan got written.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, it was all, we could do that again and not, not, you know, minimize the consulting expense. I probably think it's worthwhile to have an, an independent set of eyes take a look at it. Just to say, you know, have you royally screwed up this section or have you done something that, that's going to raise a red flag somewhere. But I think it's, I think it's quite possible that we could cut that down.
Yeah. Okay, all right, all right.
This is a year down the line.
All right, well, thank you for clarifying.
And at that point, we'll, at that point, we'll have a better idea of how much of this service we'll need, correct, Jamie?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm hoping for a leaner and meaner comprehensive plan and recognizing what's working already and accomplishments that have been made. The, um, the living document that this is, it becomes farcical because of how, how few people in the community are, are aware of it. It's three hundred pages long. If you have, uh, a really good comp, uh, capital improvement plan and a, a fresh charge of duties to that committee, that's half the work of making the comprehensive plan implemented. And, uh, the same goes with your land disordnance and other documents that people handle every day. So, um, the way I see it, this document is competing with those for relevance. It's going to be a tool and a toolkit. And I want it to be something that people pick up and use. And to me, that means, um, quite frankly, not dreaming too big, but putting a lot of, uh, putting enough into the comprehensive plan so that awareness of future issues allows the community to dream big, but, uh, does not turn into an endless things-to-do list.
Okay. Well, this has been very helpful, um, especially the timeline piece.
Yes.
Um, and my plan right now, unless I hear from my fellow board members, would be to put on the August agenda to, to do what Jamie suggests. And that's appoint a couple of select board members to recruit, but I, but there's no, uh, but there's no prohibition on going out and talking to people in the community now who saying, hey, we're going to be getting this committee together. If you know people who would really be interested and, and would be very helpful to it, you know, let's get the process rolling now and, uh, tell them to go in and fill out an application.
Can we have someone contact the, uh, members of the previous committee that are still amongst us?
Yeah, I know Linda Clancy was on that committee, I believe.
First thing I would do with these two select board members who
Remson.
Who do the recruiting is hand off to them the, the list of members when they last were convened.
Can't we hand it off to you to, to send a letter out to pre, previous people on the committee?
I think Jamie is right that it is our responsibility to do that. I think, I think it's, uh, that's a good point on his part, so. But I think next meeting we can, we can appoint two of our members and if we get some interest in, and I'll talk to Richard Remson. In the meantime, Linda, you talk to Linda frequently, I think, and I can see her too. Just feel, I mean, they may say, no, I've done, I've done that once. I don't want to do it again.
Well, I think they take great pride in the fact.
I know, I know Linda does. She, she feels very strongly that, that, uh, that's, that's her baby, so, so to speak. And she, and justifiably so because she did a lot of work on it.
I suppose we ought to also say, you know, what size are we talking about a group here? I mean, I think management people will say that seven to eight people is sort of the ideal size. You know, if you get twenty people, they want to be part of it. It kind of bogs it down.
I think if we get to the point of having a drafting committee, it might need to be bigger because that's when writing assignments would be parsed out. But the review committee, I think probably, I would think seven-ish would be about a maximum, I think.
Okay.
Okay. Good. Um, any further discussion on this topic? If not, next item is consideration of revisions to the policy on alternate members to appointed boards, commissions and committees. And Jamie has given us a memo on that also. Uh, we adopted a policy. Oh, I don't know, it's a couple of years now, allowing alternate members to appointed boards and committees.
Good night.
And I know there's some question of the purpose statement here. In my mind, there were two reasons for doing it. One was to allow quorums to be gathered if some regular members couldn't be there, but it allowed the business of the board or commission to proceed. But the other was to allow members of the public who perhaps were thinking about serving on a committee or a board but weren't sure to, to come on in that role and, and perhaps learn the committee in, in a, in a ramp up to perhaps a full membership. So with that statement, I'll let Jamie, uh, uh, go ahead on his comments there, or Rick for that matter. Do you have any comments on that?
Well, here it is, the purpose statement of your policy on the screen. And, uh, it's clear that what was on the select board's mind was to bail out those committees, especially the, um, non-quarantine judicial committees like the Harbor Committee when they're having a quorum problem. And it's the, the user experience, you know, how we cultivate these volunteers, what they think they signed up for and whether the tools are there for them to do their work when meeting day comes around is, is, is what this is about, I think. We very often have a, a phone call or an email the day before a meeting where the chair has suddenly figured out that not enough people are coming and can we scrap it? And it's very unfortunate because these appointed committees, if they don't hold to their regular meeting day and time, there's already kind of a defect in public participation going on because there's somebody out there who has a beef and was thinking of going to a Harbor Committee someday and letting everyone know what they really think. And they, they might even take time off from work or something. And if it's not going on at the day and time when it's supposed to, it's a problem. The Planning Board and Zoning Board of Appeals have a totally different set of concerns, I think, as relates to alternate members. And, um, I'll go down a little bit further just to finish with the select board policy. The other, um, kind of purposely sounding statements that you've made in this policy, which you adopted in November two thousand sixteen, is that alternate members are encouraged to regularly attend. And they may only vote in the absence of a regular member and as requested by the board, uh, or the chair. So that's the basic stuff. I'm going to go to, um, the Planning Board's bylaws, which are down from there, excuse me. Also in your packet.
Go back to that for a minute.
Sure.
When I read through that there, it, um, it struck me as it could be interpreted two different ways. May vote only in the absence of a regular member and as requested by the committee chair. So do both of those conditions need to be present?
It, the, uh, the Planning Board bylaws, which were approved a few months before this policy,
Yeah.
say something different.
Okay.
They say
Go to those then.
That the, um, the chair, and I'm really pleased that, uh, the chair of the Planning Board, John Alexander, is here tonight. And I think we're getting quickly to the point where you'll want his input. The, the chair, um, let's see here, I'm just thinking of. The chair of the Planning Board needs to manage the roster, as I put it, of the voters who are present and eligible to vote. This is probably driving you crazy and excuse me, but the, um, there might be a member who is present, uh, on the night in question, but who wasn't there last month or who wasn't there six months ago when the project on the agenda, um, came in for a pre-application. There might be a conflict of interest where the, uh, chair, here's where I'm getting there, where the chair says, um, you know, is anybody a cousin of anybody or a neighbor and do we need to, um, address any conflicts of interest before we start out on this, uh, development review item? Only sorry that it's taken so long.
I think you're looking at B number six, Jamie.
Thank you.
I think is what you're looking for.
Okay, so, starting there, the, the chair decides all questions of order and procedure, including the extent to which a member who is not eligible to vote, um, that actually can, that involves, does the, does the non-voting member have to leave the room or not?
Okay.
Uh, sorry about this, but Phil had the, had the notes all set up for me. Voting procedures is where we need to go. The, uh, to form a decision.
I know what you're looking for and I can't find it either.
I should probably just be in Phil's email, but I'll leave it up here for, uh, if we wind up referring to it. The, where am I going with this? So the, the select board has appointed a planning board and the planning board has elected a chair. The, the way these bylaws are organized is for the planning board chair to have very broad discretion over the conduct of the meetings. And so this includes, um, noticing at the beginning of a development review item, who should be eligible to vote and, and why. And so if someone comes forward and says, I have a conflict, or, uh, you know, if that, that freedom to do that.
Up to item number three, I think that's what you're looking for.
If that freedom is taken, uh, is sort of not what the select board wanted the chair to have, the, then we need to address it. The town attorney has read the planning board bylaws and the, uh, select board's policy and doesn't see a conflict. Uh, because as Doug pointed out, the, the select board's policy says both things and, uh, maybe could be clarified somewhat.
I guess the way I, the way I've read the issue, the only issue we have, the attorney says we don't have a conflict, but the only problem I see is in the situation where, where let's say there's a, uh, regular planning board member is absent. Okay. It seems to me a little unclear. It says that, that the alternate member can then vote if the chair says he can vote, I think. That's what the, the alternate policy says. So I think we as a board need to clarify that. In other words, do we want to, say if the member's not there, then the alternate member shall vote. And if that's the case, then do we want to say, well, there are two alternates. How, how is the alternate who will vote to be chosen? Is that the discretion of the chair or is that, or should there be a procedure for that where we have a first alternate and a second alternate or something like that?
Right.
I'm, I'm just concerned if, if there's any possibility of having, not that the current chair would ever do that, but some nefarious, you know, well, I'm going to choose him to vote because I know how he'll vote and this other alternative will vote a different way and, uh.
Opinion shopping.
I think if we, if we write it into the policy, then it becomes very clear. Now, obviously, if there's a conflict on any member, whether it's an alternate member or a regular member, then they're not going to, they're not going to vote.
Well, I'm doing much better on my own screen than, than driving the bus for everybody. I found, uh, my, the notes with Phil and I've highlighted now on the screen, six B four. The PB bylaws allow an alternate to vote when a member is absent and on discretion of the chair. So Doug, that answers your question. It's and, right? But the, um, the policy, um, the, later in the policy, going to the select board policy, I'll go there in a minute. Five, one, A, the first sentence of the purpose section, the town attorney says is somewhat confusing. So you're, you're covering all the same ground, uh, in your, in your observations as the town attorney and I have done. And the, the only question is, what do you want to do about it? You know, the, my suggestion is amend the policy one of two ways. First, you could say, this doesn't have anything to do with quasi-judicial boards. The Planning Board and the ZBA, you guys run your own shop. There's a lot of case law and statute guiding you already. But if you have a policy that, that is good for both the Harbor Committee type of committee and these quasi-judicial boards, you could do as, as Ken has suggested, just clarify, um, if there's two alternates present and only one planning board member who the, the planning board chair believes should not be voting or who volunteers that, that he or she has a conflict, then do you pick alternate number one or alternate number two? That's one issue that we've, we've highlighted where that could be improved.
The other question that they need to answer is that if, I think, is if there's, the alternate's vote is not necessary to meet a quorum, but can the board chair, um, appoint the alternate if it's not required to meet a quorum? And I think it's, says it in both places.
It's clear to me that the chair would have the discretion to, to allow the alternate to vote if there's a regular member absent, providing the alternate meets all the other requirements. What's not so clear and, and I think that we need to discuss on is, do we want to require that? Because an alternate member voting could potentially change the outcome. And do we, do we as a board, do we want to say, well, we only want the alternate members to vote if it's required to reach a quorum? Or do we want to have them vote? Do we want to have a full roster of seven people voting whenever possible? And I welcome John's input on this too. No, but if you have, you, you're, you're in the trenches doing this. If you, if you come on up, then that, that will help us.
So Rick, you're, you're right. That's the main point. Is this policy just for a quorum or is it for something else? Pardon me, John, I didn't mean to stop you. But the, the town attorney has found that there's no conflict between the two right now on that issue.
Right. They both say the same thing and I would agree with that. The question is, do we want to change both of them?
No, does that want to change anything? I, I read the minutes of the meeting last week and I don't know where all that information came from. Uh, Jeff Parker was weighing in about what I thought we needed or what we didn't need. And Ted said that we had problem making a quorum sometimes and he's new. I can tell you, I've been on the planning, uh, planning board for, uh, uh, seven, seven years, five years as chair. I don't ever recall us ever having a problem with a quorum, never. And the other thing is, uh, we now have two alternates, which, um, the, uh, select board decided you wanted us to have, which is not necessarily a bad thing. In terms of how I manage the meeting, and I see my job mostly about process, managing the discussion, is that if I have alternates there, it's right and proper for them to be able to participate in leaning towards what you were saying. You know, if they never open their mouths and speak, it becomes pretty boring and then they, I guess they'll stop showing up. So my philosophy as chair with alternates is give them a, a chance to comment on an application even though they're not voting so that they feel part of the board. And then when they are required and they never have been so far, at least they will have had some experience of hearing their voice in that group and in this room. And I think that's really important, um, for those people. I, I've read some things about that people are not happy with the planning board or there's been some negative comments. But that was the first I heard of it when I read the minutes of your meeting last week. So, and I don't really mind if you want to reduce the numbers down to three or you want to increase them to ten. You know, as long as we have smart people who read the, uh, application and read the ordinance and can weigh in with, with questions that we can all consider. So if it's fine at seven, I, I don't see any reason to change it. It wouldn't bother me if it was less or more. I'd still be able to manage the meeting. So, so I always say, leave things alone. I think you make, there's a problem being discussed where I don't think one really exists.
I guess I would just ask the question on the alternate members. Uh, it sounds like you've never had to have an alternate member vote.
We haven't. Uh, there was one time, uh, a couple of weeks, a couple of months back when we were discussing what should be suggested, uh, to go on the warrant. And there were only six members there, uh, of the seven, if I recall correctly. And I invited one of the alternate members, uh, to join in the discussion and to vote. Jeff, as liaison, thought that that was, um, uh, not legal. And we decided to let it go anyway, not wanting to make a discussion in public, which was unnecessary because we had a quorum anyway. So.
Well, I, I would submit that based, based on the policy that you were very well within your discretion to ask, to allow that alternate to vote. I guess my question for you as chair is, would you ever feel uncomfortable being in a position of having to choose one alternate or, over the other to vote?
Absolutely not. No, if I, I would decide, um, you know, based on, um, you know, who was the, who did it last time or who was the last member or who was the first member.
Then my question to.
I wouldn't, and, and if there was no conflict of interest. If I thought there was a conflict of interest, then of course.
Right, yeah, that goes without saying. But then my question to Jamie on the same question, I guess, is are we in any legal jeopardy if, if we have that kind of, if it's a closed vote and one or the other alternate has chosen to vote, are we in any trouble there legally? Are we in any trouble there legally?
You're talking about basically insulating a Planning Board decision from accusations of bias later on appeal.
Right.
And the best way to do that is give the Planning Board a large board, you know, a big roster to choose from and document why the Chair chose an alternate. But if there were a policy to follow, pick the most senior alternate who's present, say. I think that would be helpful. That would be, you know, closing a very small gap.
I might choose differently. I might choose to have the least experienced person because you want them to serve for a long time and how else are they going to get experience unless you give them the chance?
And I'm sympathetic to that philosophy, actually, but I'm thinking in terms of, you know, what happens if something is appealed down the road? Do we leave a crack in the armor for somebody if it's a four-three vote and-
Not if the Board records the decision, you know, that why did I put this member aside? What did that person say about conflict? And then, why did I appoint this other one? But it is a little tougher, John, with if the motivation clearly is human resources and process, which is a profound part of your motivation, it's a horrible thing to have that most junior alternate member always sitting and watching. You know, that is a real concern. And that's why it's so interesting in the Select Board's policy, it's saying more than one thing. It's saying, "I won't go find it." It's saying, "To deal with the quorum problem, but then later, in the actual provisions of the ordinance, of the policy, 5-1As, what the town attorney says, you're saying encourage." Well, how are you going to encourage participation by blocking participation?
Yeah, I mean, you have your policies, they have to be abided by and they have to be legal, but there's also a philosophy about the way the meeting has to be run. People need to feel listened to, they have to have the chance to participate and, you know, we do, you know, do the best you can for everybody. And if a mistake is made, it will be corrected later. So far, we haven't had that. In fact, you know, we've done a lot over the years to make sure there is rationale in the way that we run the meetings.
Terry, if you'd come up to the podium and while she's coming up. John, do you-
Go ahead, Terry. It's never stopped you in the past.
We have to be as inclusive as we can.
John, do you, just a quick question on that. Do the alternates participate routinely in the discussions?
Yes, and we have only had alternates for, I think, probably four meetings. And I will, it's reasonably new, and I will open to the alternates in the discussion and say, "If you want to weigh in, you're not going to vote, but if you have a point of view, by all means do so."
First, Terry McKenzie, former Planning Board member. First of all, I'm very supportive and sympathetic of John's point of view and I've sort of been witness to a lot of these discussions, but I'm just wondering if there isn't a very simple solution in plain sight. Just a thought, a seven-member Planning Board is a pretty large board, which even by itself kind of is a bulwark against less than a quorum being present. And perhaps having two alternatives is unnecessary. If you only had one, then you remove all selective processes or anything less than a neutral basis, you know? Because I think, Ken, you really do have a valid concern of some future attorney working the penknife in the plaster and saying, "Well," at the 13th hour. So, with a seven-member Board, I don't know how John feels, and again, I'm not here to be argumentative, but seven members is pretty big. And honestly, I think just having one alternative would solve a host of problems. Maybe two is one too many.
I don't think, I don't think there is a problem. I don't think there is a problem, but, you know, if you've identified one and we can help you get us to a solution, I'd be very happy to debate it and come up with ideas.
Well, in the packet, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jamie, I'm not seeing anything from the town attorney that suggests a change of the policy.
No, he says the Select Board policy has this purpose statement that talks about quorum, but it's only a purpose statement. When you go down to the actual provisions, it says what Doug found that it says, kind of basically says whatever you want to make of it. It says, "We got to encourage these people to be present." And so, that the Planning Board takes it another step and encourages them to vote and to discuss, I think is a plus.
And I don't think that's inconsistent either because, I mean, we talk about developing and training new members in the purpose statement and the way to do that is to encourage them to participate. So, I don't see any inconsistency there.
I think if there hadn't been talk last month about the number of members, I would have done my best to just work on this with Rick and you might have seen it reflected in the manager's report. But combining the two issues and hearing your invitation, Ken, to, you know, a joint workshop or even a more informal meeting in preparation for a joint workshop between the Select Board and the Planning Board, I just wanted to make sure that we have all those issues in the air and that I know what to prepare for. I agree with you. Nothing needs fixing in either of these documents, but the, knowing that the Planning, the Select Board had this idea of a quorum being the real problem, I did want to make sure that the Select Board's goals in creating a policy were, you know, not thwarted by the Planning Board bylaws. And I stopped short of having the ZBA revise their bylaws, basically on the same model, wanting to make sure that it was consistent with your goals in the policy.
So, unless the Board wanted to, unless the Board wanted to say, "We only want the alternates to be voting when it's necessary to meet a quorum, you don't have to do anything." Unless you wanted to make that limitation, you don't have to do anything. It goes there.
I specifically don't want to make that limitation. If anything, I would go the other way.
Yeah, I do, too.
If anything, I would go the other way, saying, "I want the alternates to vote if you don't have seven members because I want as many votes as possible."
If there's a seat at the table, an alternate should take it.
Should take it.
Well, I'm inclined to let this ride. I don't know what you guys think. I think we're okay. I'd say we're right. I owe you an email, but I would like to have the four of us, you, Doug and myself, and then get, I think that'd be a good answer.
There's a lot of mysteries, or I know of at least for the last, you know, eight years, that would be good to share and, you know, Planning Board should-
Well, thank you very much for coming tonight, John, and it was very helpful.
Would it be helpful, Ken, also to offer the interplay between the Planning Board and the ZBA, as I see it, in justifying the large roster? Save it for a workshop?
I think, yeah, we can save that. I don't think we need to go there tonight, unless anybody else has a different opinion, but I don't think we need to do that. I think we've put the question about the size of the Planning Board to bed, at least for the time being. And when we get together, we'll talk about it and perhaps do it in a workshop type thing. So, okay, let's move on. Thank you to all for a good discussion. Next item is an abatement of personal property taxes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personal property abatement for TD Bank Insurance Account Number 0320PP in the amount of $882.34 plus interest for the 2015 tax year as recommended by our assessor.
Second. Motion, have a second. Any further discussion? This seems pretty cut and dried. Terry gave us a good memo on it, so I don't see any issue with it at all. If not, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay, that item passes. Appointment to the Maine Municipal Association Legislative Policy Committee. This is a group that Bill Chapman was a member of for many years. And the way I understand that committee, that we always, every year voted, we elected two members in its bisanatorial district, I believe. And Bill was on it for many years. I think Jay Filer from Union is the other-
He is, yep.
Is the other member, the town manager of Union. Bill has stepped down from that committee and since he no longer serves on the Select Board. And so, the way I understand things, if we wanted to appoint somebody else to fill his spot for the remainder of his term, we could do that. I don't know if any of the other Board members are interested. I think it's a quarterly meeting, but it's an all-day meeting, I think.
You, in your comments, you said you would do it.
Yeah, if none of the Board wanted to do it, often it's the manager that does it if the Board doesn't want, if somebody from the Board doesn't want to.
Are you interested in doing it?
Sure, Ken, I'm often there when they're having that meeting because it's a day that they have the executive committee meeting.
I mean, I don't have time personally to do it.
Yeah, I don't either.
Owen couldn't do it because of a conflict of interest and I don't believe that Tom, being a full-time employee, would have.
In that case, I'll make a motion to appoint Rick Bates to the Maine Municipal Association's Legislative Policy Committee to fulfill the remainder of Bill Chapman's term.
Have a motion. Have a second on that one?
Second.
Thank you. As long as you're willing to do it, Rick.
Yeah.
That's why I delayed, you know, I wanted to give a little. So, I'm happy having Rick do it if he would like to do it. And so, if there's no further discussion, all in favor of the motion? None opposed? That's a three to nothing vote. Okay. Now, we have just a formality here to appoint Tom Gray. Even though we did the liaison thing, this one, we actually do have to vote to appoint him to the Solid Coast Waste Board of Directors. So, if we could have a motion there.
I'll make a motion to appoint Thomas Gray to the Midcoast Solid Waste Board of Directors with term expiring June 30th, 2020.
Have a motion. So moved. Second? Okay. Thomas expressed interest in doing that and so, I don't see any problem there. All in favor of the motion? Any opposed? Okay, that one takes care of that. Correction of a term expiration. I guess the term expiration date was wrong on this, so that's a quick one.
I think we missed-
Did I skip something?
The Midcoast Economic Development.
Oh, okay, sorry about that. You're right. That's another one that Bill Chapman was on and he had an open-ended term on that, as I understand it. And he could have continued, not required to be a Select Board member. Anybody could serve. He thought it was better if the new Select Board chose somebody, so, again, that's a situation where I don't have time to do it. I don't know if any other Board member would be interested in that.
Is Jay, you, how rigorous is this committee?
You're already on the committee, right, Jamie?
I'm a member of what's called the General Assembly.
Okay.
This is for the Executive Board. There's a vacancy on this Board and on the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission, which I learned by double-checking on the comp plan stuff with Ann Krieg. It's not on your agenda. But my answer to you is, it's not rigorous. It doesn't involve a lot of participation if you don't put that much effort into it. It doesn't come out of it either, though. And what you have here, increasingly, the two groups, Midcoast Economic Development District, who's on your agenda, and the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission, they're, with the new executive director at the RPC, I find that the, I'm finding that they are fairly clear about the two different scopes of work that they have. Economic development is one thing and planning is the other. But at times, both Boards have done both. And so, the question I'm left with is, do we want to have a seat on both? And I'm certainly willing and able to do whatever Rick assigns me to, but I was hoping to be on only one of these and not both. And I wanted to mention, as we are here on this topic, that the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission also has a vacancy. We are also dues-paying members for that one and get a lot of mileage out of it.
So, are you on both right now and wanting to give one up?
I'm not on either one.
Okay.
On the Midcoast Regional Planning Commission, I'm a member of their General Assembly, but I could join both or one. I think that the Economic Development District, the economic development function is a little bit less narrow, perhaps less technical, so more amenable to a volunteer from some other line of work. Could be on this Board and I could do the other or-
Do they ever accomplish anything? I mean, you know, do they set a goal and then at, you know, the end of the year, you say, "Boy, we did a great job on this and let's do this next?" Or is it just sort of, you know, sitting around yakking?
That's a challenging question, so I hope my answer is clear.
I'm starting to lose interest.
Basically, that, this, they both would be a lot more productive if there was, if they would join forces and they haven't yet. But there's two Boards and Economic Development kind of runs itself. You've got these very talented planners and economic development professionals working there. One of them was my predecessor here at the Town of Rockport, Bill Napower. And they don't need any help from a Board or a Board member in doing a really good job monitoring what is the federal funding that's coming and not coming? You know, what is the crap going on at the State House in Augusta that relates to funding that might become available to member communities? They do great at that and don't need a heavy hand on the tiller. I can't think of, I don't think it would be very rewarding for a proactive member of their development, of their Executive Board.
Would Bill be interested in continuing if the Board asked him or did he pretty much say, "No, thanks"?
Well, what he said in an email to me was, he thought it would be best for the Board, the new Board, to consider a new appointment. Now, we can, you can interpret that any way. He may have wanted to give the new Board latitude to do what they want. If the Board so chooses, I could ask him if he would like to continue to serve in that, but that's-
Well, I'm not going to volunteer, so why don't you ask him if he'd like to, if he enjoys the work and-
I think he does enjoy the work and he's somebody who was always able to get the most out of all these opportunities that he-
Yeah. Yeah, he's excelled in that. And for example, Bill and I had some ideas about working together on a project relating to businesses in Rockport that might benefit from access to sewer and how we would write that into future grant applications. So, on the local side, there's plenty of room for a member, a representative of Rockport to that Board to do good work.
Well, let's ask Bill to be our special representative then. I mean, he sounds like a, sounds like a real resource and he's familiar with it.
I think that maintaining the connection to Bill Napower down there, too, is a good thing to do because Bill is very talented. He was our planner here before Jamie and he works down there now. And he has his finger on a lot of these grant opportunities and has helped us in the past with some-
I certainly wouldn't want to lose the line in that we have.
Yeah. He has a fond spot in his heart, even though he was only here for a short time. I think he really enjoys his time here.
Well, I'll make a motion then to request that our Chairman contact Bill Chapman about continuing as our representative on the MC, McKed Board.
So, you're asking to table it until we have a conversation with Ken or? I can, you know, why don't we just, instead of doing a motion, why don't I just contact him? If he's interested, I'll put it on the August agenda and we'll vote on it.
Well, I sort of wanted in the minutes to show that the Board supports his concept.
I think Linda will put it in the minutes that way so we don't have to have a motion. Going to table the appointment then?
Yeah. And I'll return at a future meeting with an option to fill a seat on the RPC, which is related.
Okay, thank you, Jamie. Okay, and thanks for the catch that I skipped over that.
Motion to correct the committee term expiration for Richard Remsen of the Ordinance Review Committee back to June 30th, 2019.
Have a motion. We have a second?
Second.
Just a clerical error, I believe. Okay, motion, second. Any discussion? All in favor? None opposed? Okay, we take care of that. Okay, need a motion to enter as wastewater commissioners. So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Okay, we are wastewater commissioners and the only thing here is, right now on the calendar, we have a tentatively scheduled workshop for TIF and wastewater visioning on August 3rd.
Shawna can't make that date.
Right, and Stacy sent me an email saying she could come on the-
Eight at four.
At 4:00 PM. And the question is, and I would ask this of Rick, is are we ready or will we be ready for talking about wastewater visioning at that point?
Jamie's shaking his head yes.
Okay. Okay. Okay, and-
We'll be ready. We have two meetings already lined up this week in preparation.
Okay, and should we do the TIF at the same time? Should we do both issues?
I see this as all about the TIF.
Okay.
I'm not sure I understand what other wastewater visioning topic right now.
Well, there's, I mean, in general, wastewater visioning in the past has included, not necessarily just the TIFs, but in general, where are our efforts going to be focused on expanding sewer, whether there's a TIF involved or not? So-
I think the TIF might kind of drown that out in this discussion and with the comp plan and CIP coming up, you know, you might hear about that from other sources, but if you want to talk about other places to extend sewer, I'm always excited to talk about it.
It's still at 4:00 PM on the eighth.
4:00 PM on the eighth, does that work for you guys? That would be a Tuesday.
I'll be there.
And Jamie, that date works for Shawna and for you?
I haven't spoken to Shawna. I thought it would be important that only one person do that. Is that what Stacy did?
Yes. We got an email from- Yeah, I got an email from, I got an email from Stacy saying that that was fine, so, okay.
Minutes ago.
Okay, so let's schedule that on Tuesday, the eighth, at 4:00 PM. Does that work? Okay, well, we'll hope the other board members, I assume Tom can make it, it's still summertime, so. Okay, that's the only item we have for wastewater tonight, so we can have a motion to exit as wastewater commissioners, back to select board.
Motion to exit wastewater.
Second, all in favor? Okay, we're done with that. Okay, on to liaison reports. Does anybody have any? I know you...
Yeah, I went to the planning, the planning board, and, you know, it's an interesting experience.
It's one of the assets of town that I don't have a lot of experience in, actually. So I'm looking forward to sitting down and talking to John about it, which we have to do at some point soon.
You know, everybody seemed very competent. My house, well, okay, yeah.
Hey, I'm trying to remember what I had for liaison reports. I'm not sure I had anything.
Echo one coming tomorrow, I think, with Park, so I just...
Oh, yeah, I guess I should say that the main thing at the planning board was that the Ledges Motel is going to, at some point, be building a small, little building between their two buildings that house their rooms. And this will have a cafeteria and some office space in it, so.
That's always good. I did attend the library committee meeting. They re-elected Anne as chair, had their new members there, and are looking forward to a positive workshop with us in a couple of weeks. I think they're, for the most part, they are looking to find, as we are, to find a viable path forward, to work with the select board, to figure out how to proceed with this. And they're all very supportive of having a library, as I am. And that's the main message they had, and I look forward to that workshop as well. I'm looking forward to starting the process of finishing this discussion, so. And that's the only one I had this week. We have a ZBA coming up in a couple of weeks. Ambulance review, I talked to you about last time. And ordinance review, we won't do a summer session. That takes care of me. Did you have any more, Mark? You just have the one tomorrow, you said?
Yep, tomorrow, and the ambulance one I'm waiting for.
Yeah, that won't be until later.
I've had some interesting conversations with those that work there, which might be beneficial at some point.
Okay, well, hearing, seeing no further business on the agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Is this where I vote now?
We're here all night.
Stay here all night. That's called a filibuster. Thank you.